Good evening. Matter of public discourse, if you have a cellphone, please place it on vibrate or place it on off. If you wish to speak on behalf of the petition tonight, please come to the lectern and state your name and your address. Moving forward, we're going to go on to continue business, we have none. We're going to follow the agenda at this point. Should make it known, alternate member Philip Jemani will be here and able to vote on petitions to which he can hear on his arrival. So we will move forward in order. At this time, ZB 2018-29 for variance, Suppon Tseng at 26 Clare Street, section 6.1.10. The applicant is seeking variance approval to build a driveway for an existing single-family home at 26 Clare Street. The home is in the traditional neighborhood two-family zoning district, and the proposed driveway requires variance under section 6.1.10 for minimum setback from the lot line, minimum setback from the building, and for any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Is the petitioner here? Good evening.
Hi.
Mind telling us a little bit about your petition, please?
I can listen. I don't know what I'm going to do.
So you can refuse yourself?
Oh.
You just say that you're not.
Okay. Yes, my name is Suppon Tseng, asking for to do the zoning board on my parking lot at my house on 26 Clare Street, yeah, Lowell 01854.
Are you currently the owner of the property?
Yes.
Okay. You just want to tell us a little bit about what you're looking to do there? Expand the driveway, build the driveway?
Yes, I want to paving my driveway. Right now, I already have a driveway, but I have only the small rock in there, it's very hard for me to clean up the snow when the snow, so that's why I want to do the paving.
Okay, so you want to put down hot top, and you're here to speak for the variance because of the setbacks, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. You have anything else you want to talk about at this point?
No, I think that's it.
Okay, I'll open it up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor, that portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing now closed. Like to open up to the board, Dennis?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to ask a couple of questions, but I'm glad to see that you're maintaining an eight-foot width to the driveway, which is the minimum acceptable, and I'm glad you didn't want to go more than that.
Yeah.
I did notice that there are a number of properties in the neighborhood that have a similar condition, that did pave their side yards, if you will, to allow off-street parking, that made the pavement larger than eight feet.
Yeah.
And so I'd like to make sure that this plan is adopted, and we only go eight feet to minimize the pavement.
Yep.
And I like that you have a rear yard that I assume doesn't have any pavement, is that correct?
No.
There's no pavement, so it does have a lot of green space, which allows for water to get back into the ground. I think it's important to have off-street parking in that neighborhood, because the street is so narrow.
Yeah.
And I do support the idea of paving the side yard and maintaining the setbacks. One comment was, if you've spoken to the neighbor, I believe that would be probably at 24 Clare Street?
My neighbor, 22 Clare Street.
Maybe at 24 Clare Street, the house closer?
Yeah, 22 and 24, yep, I spoke with them already about to do the driveway, yep.
Okay, so as long as they have no, and they don't appear to have any issues otherwise, they probably would have been here, so.
Yeah.
I think I can support this, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Mark?
No questions, Mr. Chairman, I believe the petition speaks for itself.
Thank you, Mark. Sean?
No question to comment, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Phil?
No question, I think.
Thank you very much. So you can see, there's no questions from the board, is that I can, just, I have one question, are you seeking for a condition on that note? Okay, that being said, may I have a motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2018-29 for 26 Clare Street for variance under section 6.1.10 for construction of driveway for minimum setback from lot line and minimum setback from the building. May I have a second?
Second motion.
Roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approve.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
Ma'am, you've been approved, we wish you the best of luck there. That being said, we're going to move on, I'm going to move to the latter part of the agenda, and take these petitions out of order. I'd like to bring up Lowell Housing Authority, we're going to be going through 12 variants of like-minded variances, we will read them each into the record, we'll take separate votes on them, I'll read the first into the record, and then I'll turn to the petitioner. ZB 2018-32 for a special permit for Lowell Housing Authority, 50 Stackpole Street, section 6.3.4. The applicant is seeking special permit approval under section 6.3.4 for a wall and freestanding sign at 50 Stackpole Street in the downtown mixed-use zoning district, and any other relief required from the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Adam Garvey, 113 Burnham Road in Lowell, I'm here representing the Lowell Housing Authority as their chief financial officer. We're in front of the board tonight, seeking special permits and variances for seven locations for non-conforming signs per section 6.3.4, the table assigned regs and that zoning ordinance, both for sizing and location in the specific zoning districts that these buildings are located in. This is part of a bigger rebranding and beautification effort that the Lowell Housing Authority is going through to reposition our buildings and assets into neighborhoods, and better connect our residents to the neighborhoods. We've done new logos, new color schemes, and a new slogan that we really feel removes the stigma of our public housing developments, and better connects them to the neighborhoods that they're located in. For reference, the majority of these signs that we are installing are actually replacing existing dated and very worn signs, so we believe that this is, you know, again, part of a beautification effort that will improve the sight and look and beauty of these locations. We also feel it's going to help with traffic flow and building location for our residents and their guests, and public safety. We don't see any negative impacts to the environment, public utility, or public services, and we've recently done similar installations through the historic board at our North Common Village development, which we've received from some very positive feedback from the city and stakeholders.
Thank you very much. I do want to place on the record, we are in receipt of the main application package, indicative of photos at each location, and want to thank you for that detailed plan. That being said, you have any further questions or comment this time, Mr. Garvey?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'd like to move open to the open forum, public forum, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Would like to open it up to the board, Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have no real comments or concerns on this, the signage seems pretty straightforward, it'll certainly help beautify the housing authority's various buildings throughout the course of the city, and I wish you the best of luck, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sean. Dennis?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to ask a few questions, but before I do, I'm very impressed by the graphics of these signs, they really do make an appearance that is very substantial and unified, but give an appearance of a very well-organized and thoughtful project, so. I just want to understand the sizing, I understand you worked with the historic board or historic organization?
Yeah, at our North Common Village installations, yes.
Okay.
We did five wall-mounted signs in North Common Village.
Okay, at this particular one, is there any issue with size on these signs?
On the signs that are in front of the board tonight?
At Stackpole?
Yeah. I believe that they are larger than an addressed sign is allowed to be under section 6.3 of the zoning ordinance.
Could you just speak to why that's important for the signage to be successful? Why are you looking for that to be larger?
For visibility, and considering the size of the building and our residency and public safety, we feel that it's in the best interest of our residents and the public to have them that size, that they are visible.
And it's, they don't seem large, and so I'm kind of.
I agree.
It's very fitting, I think, for that location, so, I agree with you, I think that they make a lot of sense graphically, so, well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Philip?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Philip. Mark?
In the interest of full disclosure, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to state that I'm a 26-year employee of the Lowell Housing Authority, and having said that, I would offer the following comments. Every city department that has looked at this petition has not only spoke favorably, but has also added comments on the impressive appearance of this signage. I would say a job well done.
Thank you, Mark. So, as previously mentioned, the signage looks great, we appreciate the update on the size and what you're looking to do to maintain public safety and things of that nature, and branding is very important, maintaining actual sightlines and visual appearance for your tenants, your visitors, and your vendors is a very important thing for successful housing, so I have no further comments, any other further comments from the board?
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, the hearing that we're having right now is pertaining to every single project that's before this board right now, we're not doing separate hearings for each one, right?
As it relates, they're all like-minded variances, we will read each into the public record and take separate votes on each. There will be no need to have any further discussion to each petition, we'll just go through them, we'll vote for them, because they're all for the same exact variance. Is that acceptable, my fellow board members? Well, in agreeance to that, the petition is in agreeance to that.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That being said, may I have a motion?
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2018-32, special permit for Lowell Housing Authority for 50 Stackpole Street under section 6.3.4, for approval of a wall and freestanding sign.
You have a second?
Second motion.
You have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approve.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
Very well, ZB 2018-32 has been approved. Next order of business, ZB 2018-33 for a special permit, Lowell Housing Authority, 179 Gorham Street, section 6.3.4. The applicant is seeking special permit approval under section 6.3.4 for four freestanding signs, stands at 179 Gorham Street in urban mixed-use zoning district, and any other relief required from the zoning ordinance. Petitioner has agreed, the same comments and concerns are duly noted, that being said, I'd like to open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public is now closed. Any board members wishing to comment at this time? That portion is now closed, may I seek a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2018-33, special permit for Lowell Housing Authority for 50 Stackpole Street under section 6.3.4, for approval of a wall and freestanding sign.
You have a second?
Second motion.
You have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approve.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
Very well, ZB 2018-32 has been approved. Next order of business, ZB 2018-33 for a special permit, Lowell Housing Authority, 179 Gorham Street, section 6.3.4. The applicant is seeking special permit approval under section 6.3.4 for four freestanding signs, stands at 179 Gorham Street in urban mixed-use zoning district, and any other relief required from the zoning ordinance. Petitioner has agreed, the same comments and concerns are duly noted, that being said, I'd like to open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public is now closed. Any board members wishing to comment at this time? That portion is now closed, may I seek a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2018-33, Lowell Housing Authority for 179 Gorham Street under a special permit under section 6.3.4 for approval of four freestanding signs. That's it.
You have a second?
Second motion.
You have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approve.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
ZB 2018-33 has been approved. Moving to ZB 2018-34 for a special permit, Lowell Housing Authority, 657 Merrimack Street, section 6.3.4. The applicant is seeking special permit approval under section 6.3.4 for two freestanding signs, and one projecting sign at 657 Merrimack Street in the UMU district, for any other relief required for Lowell zoning ordinance. Previously stated and stipulated, petitioner agrees to comments and concerns. This particular time, I'd like to open it up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. May I seek a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to seek a motion for ZB 2018-34 for special permit at 657 Merrimack Street, the Lowell Housing Authority, under section 6.3.4, for two freestanding signs and one projecting sign.
You have a second?
Second.
You have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approve.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
ZB 2018-34 has been approved. Moving to ZB 2000-35 for variance, Lowell Housing Authority at 610 Market Street, section 6.3. The applicant is seeking variance approval under 6.3 for a freestanding sign at 610 Market Street in the urban neighborhood multi-family zoning district, and for any other relief required from the zoning board. Previously stated, the petitioner agrees with comments and concerns, I'd like to open it up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Any members of the board wish to speak on this petition? That being said, I'd like to make a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB 2018-35 for variance, and 610 Market Street, Lowell Housing Authority, for a freestanding sign.
You have a second?
Second.
You have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approve.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
ZB 2018-35 has been approved. Moving on to ZB 2036 for variance, Lowell Housing Authority at 580 Chempson Street, section 6.3. The applicant is seeking variance approval under section 6.3 for freestanding signs at 580 Chempson Street in suburban neighborhood multi-family zoning district, and for any other relief required from the Lowell zoning board of appeals. As previously stipulated, petitioner agrees to comments and concerns, that said, I'd like to open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Any members of the board wish to comment with any comments or concerns? That being said, may I have a motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2018-36 for variance at 580 Chempson Street, Lowell Housing Authority, for two freestanding signs.
You have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approve.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
That being said, ZB 2018-36 has been approved. Moving forward to ZB 2037 for a variance, Lowell Housing Authority, 770 Lawrence Street, section 6.3. The applicant is seeking variance approval under section 6.3 for one freestanding sign at 770 Lawrence Street in the TMF zoning district, and for any other relief required from the Lowell zoning ordinance. As previously stated, the petitioner, we've agreed for comments and concerns, that being said, I'd like to open it up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Any members of the board wish to comment with any comments or concerns? That being said, may I have a motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2018-37 for variance, Lowell Housing Authority, at 134 Fayette Street, section 6.3. The applicant is seeking variance approval under section 6.3 for three freestanding signs at 134 Fayette Street in the UMF zoning district, and for any other relief required from Lowell zoning ordinance. As previously stated with comments and concern, the petitioner agrees to move forward. That being said, I'd like to open it up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Any members of the board wish to comment with any comments or concerns? That being said, may I have a motion? Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB 2018-38 for variance at 134 Fayette Street under section 6.3, for Lowell Housing Authority, for three freestanding signs.
You have a roll call?
A second?
You have a second. You have a roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approve.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
That being said, ZB 2018-38 has been approved. Moving forward to ZB 2018-39 for a variance, Lowell Housing Authority, 33 Schaefer Street, section 6.3. The applicant is seeking variance approval under section 6.3 for a freestanding sign at 33 Schaefer Street in the TMF zoning district, and for any other relief required from the Lowell zoning ordinance. As previously stated, comments and concern have been agreed by the petitioner, I'd like to open it up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Any members of the boards wish to comment with concerns? That being said, moving forward.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2018-39 for variance under section 6.3 at 33 Schaefer Street, the Lowell Housing Authority, for one freestanding sign.
You have a second?
Second.
You have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approve.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
That being said, ZB 2018-39 has been approved. Moving forward, ZB 2018-40 for a variance, Lowell Housing Authority, at 111.1 Hildre Street, section 6.3. The applicant is seeking variance approval under section 6.3 for a wall sign at 111.1 Hildre Street in the TMF zoning district, and for any other relief required from the Lowell zoning ordinance. As previously stipulated and agreed by the petitioner for comments and concerns, we've agreed upon those, I'd like to move it to an open public forum, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Any comments or concerns from any of the board members? That being said, may I have a motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2018-40 for variance under section 6.3 at 111.1 Hildre Street, for Lowell Housing Authority, for a wall sign.
You have a second?
Second motion.
You have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approve.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
That being recorded, ZB 2018-40 has been approved. Moving to ZB 2018-41 for a variance, Lowell Housing Authority, 3.1 Hartz Avenue, section 6.3. The applicant is seeking variance approval under section 6.3 for a freestanding sign at 3.1 Hartz Ave. in the TMF zoning district, and for any other relief required from the Lowell zoning ordinance. As previously stated with concerns and comments, agreed upon with the petitioner, I'd like to move to open to public forum, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Any members of the board wishing to speak and comments or concern? That being said, may I seek a motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2018-41 for variance under 6.3, for 3.1 Hartz Ave., for Lowell Housing Authority, for one freestanding sign.
You have a second?
Second motion.
You have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approve.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
So Garvey, you've been approved for your variances, Dr. Wallace, best of luck over there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you. Moving back to new business in the agenda, ZB 2018-30 for variances, Taliant Hybruge, I apologize, at 25 Reed Street, section 5.1, 5.3.2, 6.1.4. The applicant is seeking special permit approval from the planning board, and variance approval from the zoning board, to legalize the use of a property that has operated as a three-family at 25 Reed Street. The building is located in traditional multi-family zoning district, requires special permit The building is located in traditional multifamily zoning district, requires special permit approval from the planning board, under Section 12.1(c) for the three dwelling units, and the variance approval from the zoning board, under Section 5.1, for minimum lot size, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum frontage, minimum side yard setback, and minimum rear yard setback. Section 5.3.2 for usable open space per dwelling unit, and Section 6.1.4 for off-street parking and for any other relief required on the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Taulant Highbury. I'm here today because on April of this year, I purchased 25 Reed Street and during the finance process, the bank required for a legal use determination of the house. So I had to involve the city inspector to come in, take a look at the building. And at the time, he sent us an email saying that currently 25 Reed Street was a legally existing, nonconfirming, three-family house. And he listed some requirements, like installing emergency lighting, making all the doors self-closing, and fastening some stair railings. And the way we understood at the time, the bank, me, and my agent, we thought that after doing what the inspector asked, we could go ahead and call it a legal three-family house. So I hired an electrician, did all the work that was required, and called the city inspector back. And at the time, he mentioned that these needs to be going in front of the zoning board before he could come in to inspect, to re-inspect the house.
Just a point of interest, are you in receipt of the comments memorandum dated September 17th? September 17th? From the city?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do you have any other comments or concerns at this time?
No.
Okay. That being said, I'd like to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor, in favor. That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition, in opposition. That portion of the public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open it up to the board. Mark?
The building department had indicated four items that needed your attention, needed to be remedied in order to bring it up to code. Can you tell us where you stand with that process?
So that's all being done. I'm just waiting for the inspector to confirm that everything is done properly.
So you've contracted to have these four items addressed?
That's correct.
And you're just awaiting the completion of the work and then final approval from the city?
The work is done, but when I called the city inspector, he said I had to clear these off with the zoning board before he could come in.
Understood. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mark. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I understand the situation you're in at this point right now. It's very, very unfortunate that this has been operating as a three-family for apparently several years, and it doesn't even come close to meeting any of the requirements that are in zoning, which is something I'm really struggling with at this point right now. But would you give me an idea of how the structure of the apartments are laid out in the building as far as, you know, how many bedrooms, where are they located, how many bedrooms, what's, I mean, it's a three-family, so it's kind of...
So it's three bedrooms on the first floor, it's three bedrooms on the second floor, and it's a one big, one-bedroom apartment on the third floor.
Okay. Does the top floor, the third floor, does it mean, it says a one-bedroom apartment, or is it like a studio, or?
I say it's a one-bedroom apartment because it's very large, but it's not divided into a bedroom. So basically, when you get into the apartment, you have the kitchen on the left, and then you have the bedroom on the right, which is a large bedroom with living room area in there as well.
Yeah. Are you, do you reside at the building, or are you?
I do not.
You do not. So this is simply an investment purpose, or is this?
Yes, this is my, an investment property, basically.
Okay. Do you have any other investment properties that you also?
I do not.
You don't? No. I'm just only asking because, I mean, like, when you try to purchase this, you want to do your due diligence, obviously, and I'm not saying you haven't, but for this to come up, like, all of a sudden to find out that this is, you know, doesn't meet, come close to meeting any of the zoning requirements under a two-family, and to kind of, basically, asking us to write what has apparently been made wrong over the past several years, and that's what I'm kind of struggling with at this point right now. I mean, the board's not kind of here to do that, but I'm feeling a struggle a little bit here, and I'm just trying to...
The thing is, and I did my due diligence at the time, is that it was a big misunderstanding between what the inspector said and...
Yeah.
There was a fine print there that said you had to go before zoning board, before everything could be called.
But did you do that before you?
I learned that after the fact.
After, before you purchased the property, while you were going through financing, you said?
While I was going through the financing, that's when the city inspector came in and came up with the list of requirements that he told us.
Yeah.
But at the time, the bank and everybody else understood that after all this is done, this would be called a three-family unit.
I mean, one of the main, I mean, other than, I mean, there's a lot of relief you're asking, one of the other main issues I really have is with the parking, because technically speaking, the way the lot is played out, it's almost like a trapezoid-type situation where out in the front, you really only have one spot for parking two vehicles for a three-family there. I understand that, I guess, the lot, the plans also call for an easement, if I'm not mistaken, that may allow you to access the other side of the driveway there. But do you have, like, any agreements with the neighboring property owner about the parking there as far as being able to park on that portion of the?
So as is right now, you can, I don't know, I can't speak up to code, but you can park four cars in that parking lot. That's how it's being used. And without touching the easement place, spot on the left. So there's been no issues as far as that goes.
Yeah. Well, I mean, staff provide us with a bunch of information about the surrounding properties as well, and they're all kind of in a similar situation. Some of them are worse than yours. But that's one of a lot of other different things of relief you're looking for. I mean, there's no usable open space, the parking setbacks are de minimis, I mean, really kind of, you're looking at near feet, almost inches, so it's kind of, I don't know. I'm not, I mean, I'm listening to my other board members and how they're feeling, I'm just saying, I'm just struggling with a lot of this right now, and I'm going to reserve what my fellow board members say and...
And again, this was one thing, I was put in a kind of tough situation as well, but once I purchased the property, I had two ways to go. I could continue what the previous owners had done, but I wanted to do the right thing and...
And again, I certainly commend you on that, absolutely. It's just, it happens all too often, this, these things, and, you know, we're supposed to look at the technical aspects of the zoning code and what meets the requirements and what doesn't. So again, I'm still, I'm going to wait, I'm going to listen to my fellow board members, and I'm still weighing on this, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Dennis?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a few questions, but this neighborhood is a neighborhood that I think struggles with parking, especially in the winter. It's very congested, very built up, there's not a lot of off-street parking areas, there's not a lot of green space, and this particular location is stretching the limits beyond what even the other-sited properties, other than one. I'm struggling here to understand how we could look at this and think that it warrants a variance for off-street parking. That's my biggest hurdle. The third unit you mentioned is a large open space. Would it be possible to consider that third unit living space adjacent to the second unit, and to rent the second unit and third unit together as one unit, to reap the benefits financially of having that living space? I think that it's possible to do that. If it's not divided into multiple rooms, you could have a combined second and third-floor unit with two bathrooms and multi-bedrooms, and still, I think financially utilize the building. Granted, it wouldn't be set up as a three-unit bedroom, a three-unit building, but that's in my mind, the only way that this works. Twenty-foot width, I don't like the way it's set up now, you know, paved all the way across that easement on the adjacent property. Is easement for the adjacent property to do off-street parking? You don't have off-street parking on that adjacent property without them using that easement. And maybe they can fit three cars in there, even though it probably isn't ideal, but they can do, so in my mind, what I'm seeing in the wintertime, we have no access to the easement, and we just have four cars parked in the front yard in the front, and all the drainage from the building and the parking going into the street stormwater system, none of it percolating into ground, because you don't have any green space. And that's already a bad situation as a two-family. You don't meet the parking, your stacking parkings, and, I'm sorry, I'm just not, I'm just not feeling that we have the correct methodology to grant a variance here. We, in my opinion, we're asking for too much forgiveness here with the variances. There's no other property here other than the 33 Reed Street, which is a six-unit building with, all the other properties adjacent to it do a better job of meeting zoning. Granted, they're not meeting zoning, but you're asking for much more forgiveness than the surrounding properties. And I don't like setting this precedent, and I still think that you could reap some benefit of using that third unit as adjacent to the, combining the second and third unit as one. I don't see how I can support this.
Thank you, Dennis. Philip?
Yeah, hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Yeah, even myself, I just have an issue with the driveway, especially if, I'm thinking if you can, you're going to encroach on the easement with the neighbor, how are you going to do it? I mean, what if your neighbor tries to improve on the house, that easement? Would they have enough? Would they go into the border or the boundary of your?
The thing is, I don't know how easements work in general, but there would be a problem, even if it's a two-family or a three-family, for somebody to rebuild their house. If they're, they would still create a problem, doesn't matter how many apartments would be in there. And the thing is, I don't know how it looks in the picture, but that driveway can easily fit four cars and without touching the easement, so the easement is still accessible. And given the history of the building that's been used as a three-family, I've talked to the tenants, too, they have no issues parking, finding a couple of spots on the street during the day.
So what about your neighbor, so do they like any changes you want to make? I mean, have you spoken to them?
Currently, there's no changes that are going to be made. To the neighbor, you said?
Yeah, your neighbor.
Yes, I did. So he was here on the first hearing that I had. He's concerned, he thought that I was turning into a four-family, and when he understood that nothing is changing as far as the structure of the building, he was fine with it.
Okay. All right. I was just concerned about the easement, anyway, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. So you've heard the concerns of the board. You've heard some recommendation from Mr. McCarthy is trying to reduce your family living size from a three to a two. Certainly, I can understand your comments that the current residents have no issues or concerns, but unless you have a life lease with them, that certainly could change. The onus on, and the burden that now comes upon that easement, if we grant this variance, it becomes part of that stipulation, which, correct me if I'm wrong, it puts us in a, puts the board in a precarious position of...
That easement's gone?
Yeah, if that easement's gone, it makes the off-street parking much greater, so this board doesn't have the authority or the purview to override, grant, or disseminate easements. The easement is what it is, and it runs with the land. And I agree with Mr. McCarthy and my other board members that it's a big ask. I understand this is kind of what you were handed. I think you should take, I would recommend you taking some time, thinking about reducing the amount of living quarters. Mr. McCarthy gave you a recommendation. And perhaps you may want to take some time and work with the building department, work with DPD, look at reducing the living quarters, and come back before us for a continuance, because if this goes down against you, you're, you know, you're fatal for, you're fatal. So that kind of limits your ability. Can you speak to that? Can you just speak to that, Jared, for me, if this motion is denied?
So, the building department found in their legal use determination that the property has a legal use as a two-family, so the applicant would be able to continue operating it as a legal two-family, if not granted the relief today.
Okay. So did you understand that, sir? Did you understand what DPD just explained?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments or concerns from the board? Sean?
Yep. I would agree with your recommendation, Mr. Chairman, to the applicant, I think, maybe this is something you should probably go back to the drawing board and think about and come back, because again, it's a lot, a lot of relief that's being requested here. And I want to give you, certainly, we want to give you the, every opportunity to, that possibly can, you want to make things right, but I mean, I understand, we got, the technical aspects and technical things of these are really burdensome, so we got to kind of, maybe going back to the drawing board and coming back may be a good idea if you want to consider that. I would probably suggest the same thing. So, thanks.
Thank you. The only thing, though, is that the way, how the house is set up right now, it's not easy to convert it into joining the second floor or the third floor. That would include, that would require a lot of money that I'm not able to provide at the moment. That's one thing, and I thought because of how the rest of the neighborhood is and how a lot of units in the area don't meet the criteria, I thought there was, I didn't think was, I was asking for a lot of forgiveness, if you will, but again, I don't know the codes and all, how everything works.
Well, that being said, I think, I think time is on your side. I think you should take some time, speak with DPD, educate yourself a little bit on the code. Certainly, this was, this was brought forward by the building department, and if they're looking at your property, I'm sure they're going to be looking at other properties on Reed Street as well. I can tell you this, the recommendation to take a continuance that'll allow you to think about how you can restructure your amount, the amount of residents within that structure itself, because I can, as you can see from the comments and the concerns of the board, your best, your best interest and the interest of the board and the city is to work with you, to come up with, you know, an agreeable position here... without it being too much of a detriment on you and on us. And I can, I can echo the sentiments of Mr. McCarthy. To grant this relief under these circumstances is, is, is going to be a precedent that, I can speak for myself as, as a board member, I'm not willing to, to approve, to make that a precedent moving forward. It's just, it just opens up a lot. It's a big ask. I think there is some room here for some, some give and take. And in fairness, if you're not fully aware of the ins and outs, if you will, the pros and cons, and where, where this will end up with your piece of property, the, the time would be to, is to spend some time with DPD and the inspection department and get all those things clarified. Jared?
So, just to clarify, because this has been determined to be a legally existing, non-conforming two-family, it would not require board approval to be, continue to be a two-family. So any changes that were made could be made on the ordinary building permit process.
So his options are to continue, and then he can withdraw without prejudice?
If he so chose.
Dennis?
I, I would just like to see if you're interested in, other applicants that have come before us that have been unable to satisfy the code requirements for parking have sought to lease parking spaces off-site. And I don't know if that's something that's available at this particular location, but I know that in the past, we've provided variances, especially when it comes to dense housing situations that don't meet parking on-site, that they allow for, that they provide a leased parking off-site. I, I, I know this neighborhood is really dense, especially in the winter, and even though it's operated as a three-unit in the past, I don't feel supporting it with a variance without satisfying parking makes sense for me personally. So I would entertain you looking at options, in my opinion, I don't know if the other board members would support that, but seeking a way of satisfying parking off-site would be something I'd suggest you to do and join the continuance.
Any other comments, concerns? So, so you've heard, you've heard the comments, you, you have a certain understanding of what's in front of you. You did make notice that you weren't fully aware. DPD has made you aware that if you revert to a two-family, you don't even need to come back to us. It's, it's a matter of acceptance. I'm going to let you, let you make the decision. If you would like to move forward with a vote tonight, we can certainly do that, if that's your choice. If you would like to take a week, two weeks to our next meeting, to educate yourself and understand what the cost would be for leasing, what the cost would be to, any changes in configurations within the property, I think that would be in your best interest. But certainly, that's, it's your decision.
Yeah, we'll take some time.
You would like to?
Take some time, please.
You'd like to take some time? So, at this point, are you requesting a continuance for your petition?
Yes, please.
Okay. Until the next meeting would be? I don't, apologize. We'll get you a date.
The meeting on October 11th, Thursday, October 11th.
So Thursday, October 11th is our next meeting. Please make notice of Thursday because of the holiday on Monday. If you're agreement with that, we'll take a, we'll take a, a motion and a vote to continue to October 11th. That satisfy you?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns from the board? That being said, may have a motion for continuance.
Three, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2018-30 for 25 Reed Street to continue this hearing to October 11th, 2018.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
We have a roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Continue to October 11th.
Member Callahan?
Continue to October 11th.
Member McCarthy?
Continue to October 11th.
Member Brier?
Continuance.
Member Jamina?
Continuance.
All right, so you may continue till October 11th. Just keep in mind those issues and concerns of the board and seek out help from DPD and planning department and inspectional services, and we'll see you on the 11th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward to ZB 2018-31 for variances, Tristan Dean at 79 Mount Washington Street, Section 6.1.10. The applicant is seeking variance approval to build a driveway for an existing single-family home at 79 Mount Washington Street. The home is in a TMF zoning district, and the proposed driveway requires variance under Section 6.1.10 for the minimum width, minimum setbacks from the lot line and building, and any other relief required from the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Tristan Dean at 79 Mount Washington Street, and currently I have an unpaved driveway, curb cut, and I would just like to pave the space that we currently use.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns or wish of the board?
Uh, no, it's, uh...
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. That being said, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up to the board. Dennis?
Three, Mr. Chairman. Like to ask a couple of questions, but I'd just like to mention that this property seems extremely well-maintained.
Oh, thank you.
And I've noticed in the neighborhood, there's a number of these properties that have adopted their side yard, similar to one that we already approved tonight. And I think it's wonderful to have off-street parking if you can get it. And it looks like you're doing a good job already with your gravel of getting it.
Thank you.
On the site plan, though, you're extending the pavement beyond the existing gravel, and it looks like you're going to 33.6 feet.
Yes.
Is the intent to have more than one car parked in that space?
Yes. It, it wouldn't technically be two spaces, but we would fit both of our cars there.
And that would not interfere with the sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay. I agree with you. You should be able to fit two smaller cars, no big, large pickup trucks, but that's great. And you still maintain a lot of green space, and your side yard setbacks are relatively close to zoning, and you're only asking for an eight-foot width, which I appreciate because it allows more green space to be afforded for the side yards. So, all the power to you. I like it a lot.
Thank you.
You're not going to be expecting to go beyond 15 feet with the curb cut? I imagine it'll be probably close to 10 feet maybe with the radiuses. Okay.
Yeah. We will be, we won't be modifying that at all.
Yep, very good. Okay. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Philip?
I'm, I'm fine with it. Thank you. I mean, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Mark?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Generally, approval of this, your, the requests you're making are very minimal, so I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no comments. I understand, you know, the need of parking is, is always, is paramount. The extension, it doesn't interfere with the sidewalk, does allow you to get two small vehicles in there, non-pickup trucks, non-V8s.
Yeah.
Which is, which is fine. So, do appreciate your patience tonight. That being said, any other comments or concerns? May I seek a motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion for ZB 2018-31 for variance at 79 Mount Washington Street under Section 6.1.0 to build a driveway with minimum setback from lot line and building.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
We have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approved.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
So you've been approved. Best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. Moving forward, under other business, we have minutes for approval from our April 19, April 9th, 2018, and May 31st, 2018. Does anyone have any comments or changes? We have a motion for acceptance?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for April 19th, 2018, and May 31st, 2018.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
Roll call?
Just to clarify, who was the second there?
I was.
Mark?
Mr. Brier.
We have a roll call for acceptance?
Chairman Perrin?
Acceptance of the minutes.
Member Callahan?
Approve the minutes.
Member McCarthy?
Approve the minutes.
Member Brier?
Acceptance.
Member Jamina?
Approve the minutes.
That being said, under other business, we have notices. We have a 2019 meeting schedule in hand, online, and available for public. Any board member wishing to have a paper copy, please see the DPD. All others, please go paperless and utilize the online system. It's also available to the public online as well. That being said, any more comments or concerns? Do you have any materials for our next meeting?
I think we just need formal approval of the schedule.
Okay. That being said, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the 2019 meeting schedule.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the 2019 meeting schedule.
We have a second?
A second.
We have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Acceptance and approval of the 2019 schedule.
Member Callahan?
Approve the schedule.
Member McCarthy?
Approve the schedule.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Jamina?
Approved.
We have accepted and approved the schedule for 2019. Any other comments or concerns of the board member? DPD? That being said, may I have a motion for adjournment?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night.